Now that we've been given permission by the computer, we can start. Welcome everyone to the village council meeting. October 29th is 6:30. And what I'd like to do is I'm gonna ask everyone to stand to join us with the pledge of allegiance. But then I'm gonna ask you to remain standing because I'd like to make some further comments after that. I'm gonna ask us to stand for a moment of silence. As we all know, we've seen in the news, a tragic terrorist attack against the Jewish community in Israel. Where you have innocent men and women and very innocent children who lives were brought to an end. And I'd like us to not only have a moment of silence and condolences for them, but a moment of silence and and hope that a peaceful resolution can be reached so that on either side, there's no more innocent civilians that lives lost in this in this conflict. So please join me in that. Thank you all, you may be seated. Okay Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present?
Yes.
No, with the exception of Jan. Oh, so she's here remotely? Okay. You have that recorded, okay. We're going to start, normally we start our reports, but we have a really important presentation this evening. This morning, there was a transportation agency, Palm 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 Beach Transportation Agency meeting. And the highlight of that meeting was the presentation by the executive director Clinton Forbes on his his strategies and plans for transit service, Palm Transit Service. And it does have a direct effect on the village of Royal Palm Beach. And he's here tonight to share with us his vision and his strategy. So if you come join us, we appreciate that sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members. Thank you for allowing us to present to you on your agenda this evening. It was great coming into the city of Royal, the village of Royal Palm. I saw the new facility and I parked near it hoping to get inside.
Oh.
I was really hoping.
Sorry, nobody told you that.
I was like, I really wanna see this new building, okay? And so I sat out there, I said, okay, no cars are pulling up here. It must be, it must be still in the old chambers. So I'm looking forward to that opening and coming back and seeing that great facility that you have. Beautiful. Is it possible to queue up the PowerPoint?
We're gonna have a commercial break right now. We'll be right back with the presentation.
Pause for technical difficulties. Hard to hire good help.
Jan, are you out there?
Is Jan waving?
Is Jan waving?
That's alright.
Is Jan waving? I asked if she was out there.
Thank you again. So and and Mr. Mayor and councilman, pardon the redundancy. We know you heard this presentation earlier this morning. And so we're delighted to present to you some of our new strategies that we're implementing around the county. And Royal Palm will be one of the first municipalities to benefit from this. This, this is our cover slide here. I just love this slide. You know, it really exemplifies Palm Tran its assets. You know, the vehicles we use to execute our mission. And of course, the employees, our frontline employees at that. Of which, we're a thousand people organization, about 650 under the Board of County Commissioners, and more than 400 contracted employees. And and what we do is we provide access to opportunity for everyone. That's our mission. We provide access to opportunity for everyone. And our, the pillars when we execute that mission are safety, of course, efficiency, and great customer service, courteous. What we'll be talking about this evening is that second pillar, which is efficiency. You know, how are we maximizing the tax dollars that we are entrusted with to provide an effective public transit system? And so this is our agenda. Some of these we'll we'll gloss over really quickly. Really wanna get to the subject that directly impacts Royal Palm. Here are our three modes of public transit in Palm Beach County. The fixed route, which we have about close to 10 million rides annually. Our paratransit system have close to a million rides annually. And mobility on demand, a new approach to service in our western community, in the Glades Community. A door-to-door on-demand service has about 120,000 rides per year. But what we'll be talking about today are our fixed route and our paratransit modes. And you know, one of the things that the board directed us to do at the last board workshop, the Board of County Commissioners workshop on September 26th, was to look at the system and see how we can make, you know, our fixed route and paratransit system more efficient. And and that's what we did. So we'll be presenting to you some some concepts of how we got there. They also directed us to, you know, present to the respective municipalities that these changes impact. And so just jumping right into the efficiencies. And we won't focus on Route 21, that's in Riviera Beach. But that is a part of what we're doing as a part of this new service design that we will hopefully be implementing in January. But Route 52, you should be very familiar with. That is a route that traverses Royal Palm. It serves major destinations such as the State College, Palm's West Hospital, Wellington Regional, the Mall of Wellington Green, and of course, the municipalities of Royal Palm and Wellington. Our proposal is to eliminate Route 52. Route 52 is the lowest performing route of all 31 routes under Palm Trans, you know, systems suite. So it is the lowest performing route. And when we say that, that means we measure that based on the number of customers riding. And we use a term in transit, passengers per hour. How many passengers are riding per hour? That standard typically is in a productive system, somewhere between 12 and 15 riders per hour. This service falls below six persons per hour. So as I say in this business, we're kinda carrying air conditioning on this route. But nonetheless, we are transporting people who need, who probably have no other mobility option. I've taken and ridden this route several times just to get a a real sense of the ridership. And our computers and data that we retrieve from the vehicle is accurate. We aren't carrying many people. So what we are proposing is to eliminate Route 52. And replace it with a transport network company voucher pilot program. And so essentially, what will happen here is this community will essentially emerge with a better option of mobility than it currently has. And this is an efficiency for us because this route actually annualized. It cost us approximately a million dollars annually. This new concept will be somewhere around 150 to 200,000 dollars. The delta there is is our self savings. So it's a pretty significant savings. And so this is the concept that we are proposing to our board to move forward with. And so we'll talk about how this works and how the public will will benefit from this this new option. And so we we sort of talked about that already. So in terms of the efficiencies, and this was a directive of the board to move forward with efficiencies in our system. There are, of course, Route 21 in Riviera Beach and Route 52. Those are essentially the savings. There are some other minor cuts that we also will be endeavoring in. We won't get into that in the interest of time. But the lion's share of that 2.4 million dollars, about 2.2 million of that are the routes 21 and 52. Those are, that's the savings for that. We've asked the board not to claw that money back to the general fund, but to allow us to reinvest it back into the system. And the bottom table, you'll see that reinvestment of 2.4 million dollars, where we'll be investing in transport network companies in three communities throughout Palm Beach County. Royal Palm, the Palm Beach Gardens Riviera Community, and Boca Raton. And also Route 3. Route 3 is a route that traverses from Gardens Mall to Boca Raton and back. And that's the, if you see on the right side of the slide, that magenta line, which really goes straight down the spine of Palm Beach County, is the route we are asking to reinvest to increase the frequency from 30 minutes to 20 minutes during weekday, and from 60 to 30 minutes on Sunday. And so we believe that when you dial up, not only believe, it's a fact. When you dial the the frequency up, you improve the frequency, you increase ridership. You increase usability. And so that's what we are asking the board to allow us to reinvest the eliminations, these efficiencies into. Additionally, that also affects this area. Route 40 is a lifeline route, and we won't go through all of these, but I did wanna highlight Route 40, that traverses from the western community, Glades Community, you know, east of State Road, on State Road 80, to the Medical Center and then to Wellington Mall. That route currently will then leave Wellington and traverse on 441, and then go east on Southern Boulevard. As you know, a lot of commercial development on Southern Boulevard, not much pedestrian access. So we don't get really any rides between 441 and downtown West Palm. We are changing that in this proposal where we will bypass Southern and go north on 441 to Okeechobee. Make that right on Okeechobee and go downtown. And so that essentially, what that does is increase the access to transit in that very important corner of Okeechobee. And it increases the frequency when you compress, you combine, you know, Route 43 and all the other service on Okeechobee, and now you have Route 40. So we think that's gonna be a major improvement for mobility for those customers coming from the western community. So here's just an illustration of what happens when you turn up the dial on frequency. Just really quickly, here are four routes. We're we're showing you here, two north-south routes, two east-west routes. Route 1 is our most productive route, which is the eastern part of the county on South Dixie. And of course, we talked about the Military Trail, Route 3, Route 43 traverses Okeechobee into Wellington. And Route 62 is Lake Worth into Wellington. So you know, all of these routes really, you know, affect the Royal Palm area. But Route 3, we're requesting the board to, again, move that service frequency from 30 minutes to 20 minutes. And just an illustration of what happens when we do that, when we turn up the dial on frequency. Route 43 ridership, the table at the bottom shows in 2021, we invested in turning up the dial on frequency for Route 43 from 30 minutes to 20 minutes. And from 2021 to 2022, we saw 15% increase in ridership. From 2022 to 2023, we saw a 22% increase in ridership. And we believe the same will happen for Route 3 on Military Trail. And just, this is just a snapshot of what's happening on Route 3. You know, we have state-of-the-art audio and video equipment where we can actually peer into the vehicle live to see what's going on. And staff have, they've been doing this during peak periods just to see what the ridership is. And the ridership is heavy on Route 3. And this is what we call in transit, a crush load. And we like to see this because we love ridership. But at the same time, it's it's not very comfortable for the customer. Many of those customers are, won't be able to get a seat during their trip. So by reinvesting some of these savings into Route 3, will provide some relief. There'll be six additional buses on Military Trail, and you know, customers will be able to get a seat. So we we talked about these, I'm not gonna go into the other areas, but we are essentially introducing two, I mean, I'm sorry, three TNC voucher pilot programs. And so we wanna share with you how they will work. So we will not remove the bus stops in Royal Palm. We will geocode all of the bus stops, most of them, in Royal Palm. You can see that the shaded area, what we call the zone, that will be the zone which we have designed where people will be able to access and hail an Uber or Lyft or taxi, right? And so we cover all aspects of the existing route in this zone. So how it works is a customer, and by the way, this is why I believe that this community will emerge with better transit, because fixed route, which is the most efficient performer transit, but might not be the most convenient. Every fixed route trip begins with a pedestrian cycling trip or someone drop you to the bus stop. You have to get to the bus stop. But here, a person with this new system will be able to hail an Uber, Lyft, or taxi from their home, just like you would do, you know, any anywhere else. And that vehicle will pick you up from your home and take you to a predetermined point within the zone. So you select your origin, the curb or predetermined point within the zone. Select the destination, the curb or predetermined point within the zone. The customer's trip cannot extend beyond the zone. That's the shaded area, alright? And we've estimated that if the trip is within two and a half miles, the customer's $2 copay, and that's the same amount that they currently pay on fixed route, and the $8 voucher will cover the one-way trip. Now, a customer doesn't necessarily have to transfer to a fixed route. A customer could be within two and a half miles of a Publix or a barber shop or the pizza shop. And they'll be able to take that Uber for $2 and will, as the county subsidize that trip at $8. If the customer trips exceeds the subsidy within the zone, the customer will be responsible for the difference. So if the customer wants to go five miles, and let's say that that trip comes to $12, they'll pay the $2 copay. We will subsidize $8 with the voucher and an additional $2 for for the extended trip. So a customer, if they wanted to travel outside of the zone, and let's say they wanted to go downtown, they will hail the vehicle from their predetermined point, which could be their home, and trans, and essentially select a bus stop that connects like Route 43 to downtown. That Uber will take that person within 400 feet of that bus stop, and they will be able to transfer fare-free to that bus to get downtown. So that $2 that they paid for the copay, also you will not have to pay on the fixed route once you make that transfer, alright? And so if customers does not have, if the customers do not have a smartphone or requires an ADA vehicle, we still have to make accommodations for that. ADA accessible taxis will be deployed by telephone. And so we are, as directed by the board, we are looking at the Loxahatchee area to test some of this area as well. So we will be moving forward with geo-coding stops in the Loxahatchee area as a part of this pilot, as directed by the board recently. And just, I won't go into this quick, you know, but this is the efficiency, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility, you know, managing Palm Tran, a, one of the largest departments in the county. We draw in about 111 million dollars of ad valorem equivalent dollars to operate Palm Tran. Our operating budget is 138 million. So a substantial part of our operating budget are from taxes, ad valorem taxes and gas tax. And and so, you know, we've been directed by the board to be as efficient as possible. And so, you know, this is something that we presented to the board where we'll be less reliant on ad valorem dollars, at least to the tune of $5 million, where we will be maximizing our federal grant revenues to generate about 3.8 million dollars and eliminating some redundancy in contracting services, which brings us to a total of $5 million. That's $5 million that the county will not have to transfer to Palm Trans operations budget from ad valorem. And they were quite pleased by that. And we'll continue to to work, you know, in this effort. Really briefly, a part of this, we talked about our other mode, which is a very important mode to the elderly and disabled, and that's our connection efficiency project. That's the service that we provide to the elderly and disabled, door-to-door service. And this project was implemented, began in 2019 to really address the rapid growth and increasing costs of the Palm Tran connection service. And just to kinda show you where our service stands when compared to our peers. And I, and I think this is, this is important in terms of the growth of this service. These are our peers, one of which or two might not be really similar in size. That includes Broward and Miami-Dade. But most of them are. I mean, Miami-Dade is is probably around 2.9 million. Broward is 1.9. But every, all the other areas are roughly 1.2 to 1.5 million in population. So they they are our peers. But you can see the proportion of paratransit, the paratransit budget to our fixed route compared to our peers. It is out of kilter. A third of our Palm Trans operating budget is used for paratransit operations. Say, well, why is that? What happened? And so what happened here is several commissions ago, policies, decisions were made to provide paratransit service for the entire county. And and the federal guidelines, because they recognize the high cost of paratransit, they do allow some allowances where, you know, you don't have to provide paratransit service for the entire county. It can be provided within three-quarter mile of the fixed route. That's the guideline from the Federal Transit Agency. The county several years ago decided to provide it for the entire county. It is very difficult, once you provide this service to the entire county, to roll, now roll this back. But it is growing at an unsustainable rate. And it's something that needs to be addressed, and it's something that we are addressing as a part of our efficiency project. Just so that you understand this issue, the American Disabilities Act of 95 Just so that you understand this issue, the American Disabilities Act of nineteen-ninety, which is a civil right, essentially ensured that there is no discrimination of people with disabilities and access of public life and transportation and facilities and government and so forth. Well, in the transportation industry, essentially, you know, the transit agencies were charged to ensure that the fixed route system was completely one-hundred-percent ADA accessible so that people with disabilities can access the fixed route just like an able-bodied person, which meant that we had to have wheelchair positions, we had to have kneeling buses, we had to have announcements on the buses, automated announcements. And we have that, our fixed route, a hundred-percent accessible. The paratransit service, which is the door-to-door, was always meant to be a safety net. It was not meant to be the primary transport of those with disabilities. And that's essentially what the county many years ago kind of moved to. It's like everybody who has a disability, they use paratransit. Now, it's supposed to be a safety net for those people who cannot access the fixed route because maybe sidewalks or infrastructure or curb cuts or because they might have a disability that, you know, they have extreme dexterity issues or cognitive issues and they can't access the fixed route. So we've opened it up essentially for everyone and we're trying to very, very, in a very sensitive way, in a very graceful and strategic way, you know, change this model. And we'll share with you how we're doing that. And essentially, this is how we're doing it. Our recommendation to the board was to align the ADA service area within three-quarter mile of the fixed route and launch an alternative transportation service for those who are outside of the three-quarter mile. Now, that's a lot of folks and we'll walk you through how we propose to do that. And of course, adjust the fares to federal guidelines to no more than twice the conventional fixed route fare from three-five-fifty to four dollars. We'll talk about that. So here's the recommendation in terms of ADA service. And we're talking about this because this does also affect Royal Palm. And here you have three maps. The map to the right, the far right is the fixed route system. That's the, you know, the magenta sort of pink line, squiggly lines, that's all of our fixed route system. The three-quarter mile buffer is the shaded pink area around the fixed route. That's what we are required essentially by FTA to provide. And that's what most of the country provides. They provide paratransit within that three-quarter mile of the fixed route. The third map to the left, to the far left, is what we do in Palm Beach County. We provide paratransit service for every corner of the county. And we'll tell you how that affects, you know, the budget and service delivery. And so, again, the recommendation will be to align the ADA service area within FTA guidelines. In 2022, there were eight thousand rides on paratransit. Five thousand, and we've just done this analysis, five thousand and four hundred and twenty were done within the three-quarter mile buffer in our system of the fixed route. And twenty-six hundred were outside and you can see some of the areas, including the Village of Royal Palm. What we will be proposing, and again, we're not proposing a light switch approach to this, I like to liken it to sort of a dining room dimmer approach where we just lightly turn on different aspects of the service over multiple years until we get to that bright light after maybe three or four years. We cannot take a light switch approach to this, dealing with this population of riders. And so we will begin to provide an alternative transportation service for those who live outside of the three-quarter mile requirement. So within the three-quarter mile, they'll see similar service with ADA in terms of the Palm Tran connection vehicles and following all of the sort of restrictive policies of the FTA and how you deliver that service. And outside of the three-quarter mile, there will be an alternative transportation provider such as Uber or Lyft or Userv, which is a budding provider, door-to-door provider for accessibility taxis or a Palm Tran connection vehicle. So people will not lose service. It just will be possibly a different vehicle and a less costlier provider. And of course, we talked about FTA recognizes the high cost of paratransit operations and allows high fares. And so we are proposing that to raise the fare from three dollars and fifty cents to four dollars. The last time the fare was raised was three dollars to three dollars and fifty cents in 2013, nearly ten years ago. The, you know, it's a balancing act that the FTA has done here. They recognize the high cost, so they allow you to charge twice the fixed route fare, which is two dollars. So the maximum is four dollars. Many of the transit properties around the country, including our neighbors to the south, have already, you know, done this. They charge the maximum. But on the other hand, you cannot charge no more than twice the fixed route to ensure that you don't put an additional financial burden on this very sensitive population of riders. And here, we're at the end here, this is just a summary of what we're doing. The fixed route service efficiency and reinvestment, we are going to implement, we're shooting to implement this in January. The operational efficiencies, in other words, the grant revenues and eliminating redundancy and the savings to the county and ad valorem, January 2024. And we want to continue the implementation of the connection efficiency project using a phased approach with each phase to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The fares, we are recommending moving forward for next year to align the ADA service area with FTA guidelines. We want to do that over a three-to-four-year period. And of course, that will be combined with the effort to provide an alternative transportation service for those who live outside of the three-quarter mile. And the last slide is that we were directed by our board to ensure that we present these changes to the municipalities that they impact, which includes the Village of Royal Palm. We made a presentation earlier at TPA and we will also be presenting at Boca Raton, Riviera, Palm Beach Gardens and the Village of Wellington. The board also directed us to hold a public hearing and allow our Palm Tran Service Board to hold a public hearing on these recommendations. That will be October 26th, I believe that's next week. And we take the input and feedback back to the board to ratify the plan on November 28th. And we'll begin implementation, you know, hopefully January and it'll be, in terms of the connection efficiency, it'll be a multi-year implementation process. Now, in terms of implementing the Transport Network Company voucher program here in Royal Palm, we plan to have a robust communication strategy plan to ensure that first, the existing riders understand that this is the new service and any people who actually haven't tried transit to now try this new service. And how we plan to do that is we have automated announcements on our buses. So as soon as the board gives the green light to move forward with our plan, we plan to begin just, you know, having those announcements play on our buses. We have infotainment screens on our buses that will also be playing information related to these changes. We'll send out mailers to the entire community, informing them of the changes. And we hope to work with your team to also partner in communicating this new service. So Mr. Mayor and councilpeople, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today and we're here for any questions that you might have.
Yeah, well, thank you for that very detailed presentation. I do have a couple of questions, but before I go into my question, this is very interesting. I, many of you know, and my citizens know because I've made many comments about the strategy for the last at least two years that we've been taking at the TPA of trying to create a more robust, more useful public transportation capability. And one of the things I've been advocating and talking about is this concept of really taking the words first and last mile and putting it to work. And what you are proposing is very, almost very similar to what I envisioned that, you know, we needed to be done. The other thing, I just like, for me, putting this into a broader context, for us to get to where I think we need to get to, which may take twenty years, none of us may be around then, in terms of really creating a robust public transportation capability that truly gives a citizen the option. I don't need to take my car to get to where I want to go. I can get there when I want to get there safely and comfortably and it's not a problem. And this is, I look at this as the first steps in that journey of hopefully achieving that. And so with that said, I guess one question I have for you is, when do you think you'll get the approval from the Board of County Commissioners?
We hope to get that approval November 28th.
Okay. And so the public information program wouldn't start till that happened? Okay.
Yeah, and we believe, you know, if we're going to implement this in January, that's a good month of, and by the way, we will have people on the ground as well at the Wellington Mall and we'll be actively, you know, putting this information out. We've gotten really good at communicating with our riders. The twist to this is communicating to the people who haven't tried it.
Well, yeah.
And so, but we think we'll, at that time, we'll have enough time. And by the way, you know, January won't be the time we stop promoting it, right? I mean, so once it's implemented, we'll continue to communicate to the public that this new service is available and we'll have signs at all of the bus stops. I failed to mention really the architect of this, Yash Nagal, our Director of Transit Planning and his team. So, Yash, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say before I open up the questions, I just want to say that what I'd like to have is if you or the corporate staff members have a sit-down with our manager just to make sure that he works through the details so he's in a better position to help us, you know, work this as we go through it and create that partnership as you suggested.
Definitely love to do that, absolutely.
Who was first?
The mayor. So, how do I get a voucher?
So the voucher will be, it'd be just like intuitive as you hailing the vehicle with Uber. We want to make it as seamless as possible. So the voucher will be a part of the app. So when you pull up your phone, your smartphone to request the trip, it'll be intuitive. All of that, the voucher will be there, you'll go to the app, you'll put in your predetermined point and it'll essentially figure everything out for you, just like Uber does, right? It'll show you the distance, the amount and that the county is subsidizing eight dollars of the trip.
Okay. So within that zone, can I access whatever bus routes remain available? Obviously, with the intent being that part of the destination menu is the ability to get on a bus to go downtown, for example. So I assume this has all been figured out and the answer to that would be yes, I can get through a bus if I want to go down to West Palm like I normally do on 52, I have a connection?
Yes, and so the, all the bus stops will be geocoded. And I think the operative word in this program is pilot. And so we'll, we be measuring the success of this program. You know, if there's a bus stop that actually no one is actually, you know, using that stop, we might remove that stop. Definitely the ones with the shelters will remain, right? And so, yes, you'll be able to hail that vehicle and be transported to within four hundred feet of the bus stop. By the way, just to kind of, you know, pictureize this, the car or Uber or Lyft is not stopping in the roadway, right? The instruction is four hundred feet within the distance of the bus stop. So, you know, they could be, you know, go in the parking lot and drop that customer and not, it will not be instructed to stop like a bus would in the roadway.
Okay. And one other thing, so talked a bit about Route forty-three and Route forty. Are both of those routes going to continue with Route forty being a new route? Is that, is that right? So if I want to go downtown West Palm Beach, I have those two routes that I can actually use to get there? Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, as you know, Route forty-three from Wellington, it makes a right on Belvedere, right? It makes a right on Belvedere and so it doesn't go all the way north to Okeechobee. It goes right on Belvedere and then it goes east to Benoist because they're, as you know, huge residential area, mostly apartment complexes and we have a lot of ridership along that corridor. So we'll continue that. But what we have now is what we would describe as an L where the forty will bypass Southern Boulevard, go up to Okeechobee and then make that right on Okeechobee to head downtown. And so, you know, compact it when you have forty-three and forty, you know, serving that quarter together, you essentially have fifteen-minute service downtown. So if you're at a bus stop along Okeechobee, you can either take the forty or forty-three to get downtown.
And so actually, the new forty would be more of an express route downtown than forty-three would be, I've ridden forty-three and that gives you a tour of neighborhoods.
Right, it will be. We designed that express route, yes.
Yeah, okay. And so that's, that's good. That's another step as the mayor was saying, these are first steps in the direction of making mass transit more attractive, more frequent, more direct, more efficient. One last thing, how are we doing on the shelters, RFP?
Good evening. Yash Nagal, Director of Transit Planning. So our shelter RFP right now is actually on the street. It's advertised. Our award, contract award date is somewhere in early December. So, you know, we're very happy that it's been advertised and we're getting very close to putting shelters out. Yes, yes, and we had a, we recently had a pre-proposal conference and we had a lot of vendors that came out and they were interested, you know, obviously in the product. So there's a lot of promise in there. And then I also want to mention that along with shelters, the RFP also includes other improvements like digital screens at the bus stops or real-time information, solar lighting so the passengers can feel safer at night, things of that nature, bike racks, other types of amenities, benches, regular benches.
Thank you very much. I have several questions, so thank you very much for the presentation. It's not easy to worry, to figure out how to move people around in such a vast area when they're all going in different directions. So I appreciate that. I'm going to give you a scenario and then you tell me how I would go about with this new process. So I'm a sixteen-year-old student. I go to Royal Palm Beach High School because you have three stops in front of our high school. It's five o'clock at night because I just got finished with practice. I need to take a transfer to get home and I then walk four or five blocks after my second bus stop. So now how do I maneuver this process when I take the bus as that's my form of transportation right now?
Yeah, and depending on where he lives and the mileage between the house, I don't know that information, but one thing that the folks that are sixteen or under are extremely conversant with technology, as we know, and so they will be, that sixteen-year-old will be able, you know, at the school to be able to hail an Uber or Lyft at the school. Now, if there's a bus stop near the school, that will be, there are three, that'll be the predetermined spot so that that person will stand by the bus stop and hail the Uber or Lyft and that Uber and Lyft will take them directly to their home. So if it's within two and a half, if it's within two and a half miles, if it's beyond that, they would have to pay the freight, the difference.
So right now, there's, we have many of our students that take the bus that come home that leave after because it's practice and whether they don't have their own vehicle. I, as a parent, do not feel comfortable having my fifteen, sixteen-year-old get in an Uber or a taxi or a Lyft. So that to me is a concern from a parental standpoint, but now how do I maneuver that? Let's say I'm sixteen, I'm very tech savvy, I have the app, I get on the Uber ride now, but I normally take a transfer. So am I able now, are you taking me from an Uber to another bus stop, which then I can catch that bus that's going to stay on the route to get home?
Are you saying transferring to Route 52?
I'm saying there's a different, wherever they go. So we have students that live throughout, outside of Royal Palm Beach.
Oh, outside of Royal Palm Beach.
Right, so they'll take the bus. So if you're eliminating my route, and I usually take my route and I go somewhere, are you then, am I now going to Uber from the stop outside of my, of the high school to where I normally would have caught my transfer to then take that bus and go from there?
Yes.
Okay. So those are some things I have. And then we talked about, I believe the last time you were here, that you guys were coming up with an app so that we could gauge where the bus was in the process of coming to get me, so now, or where they are in their route. So now after going this area, are you still working on the app so I can find my bus or locate the bus and I can see if it's on track?
Yes, we actually Yes, um, we actually have that app, uh, now. Um, of course, with the Uber, the ride hailing technology, you'll be able to see it. Uh, with this, you know, with, with the, uh, TNC, uh, program that we're starting. Um, but we have that technology currently where, uh, if a, uh, customer downloads our app and, um, they can actually pull up the, the, the bus route number and they can actually see where exactly the bus is.
It is, so how much further along I have to wait till?
And how, and how long you have to wait? In fact, if you don't want to go on the app, uh, you can be at the bus stop and, uh, uh, dial 561-561, uh, and input the bus stop number and it'll give you the next three times the bus will show up. And we're going to actually even make that simpler with our new, uh, bus stops that we're going to be installing all throughout the county where instead of some, you know, all the work of, you know, texting, et cetera, you'll be able to point your camera to a QR code.
QR code, right.
And you'll see exactly where the bus is, it'll pull you right up to that prompt.
Okay, um, I think all, if not the majority of your buses are wrapped with advertising as the stops and everything. Where does that money that's generated from the advertising go towards?
It goes to support our operations, uh, budget.
Right.
Um, we generate close to a million dollars annually, uh, in a, you know, 138 million dollar budget. And so our advertising is from bus shelters to the advertising on the buses. Um, they're revenue generating, uh, uh, contracts. Uh, and that, that part of that money also maintains, uh, is paid to maintain the, uh, bus stops within unincorporated Palm Beach County.
Okay, because my concern is, is raising the rates for the paratransit. Um, that pop, you know, it's very difficult for the population that uses that facility already and now to be burdened with an increase in it. It just seems as if we're shifting dollars that it, it seems like we can do something that doesn't have to increase that, that rate for them. Um, and then downtown, they got rid of the, um, the trolley service, they're now using circuit. It's interesting to see at all their stops how they have a piece of cardboard out there that says, this is no longer an active stop, please use this. So I anticipate that those are other advertising methods that you're going to use. But it, it's interesting to see is where we talk about mobility and the ease of it, where we're kind of shifting to, we've just gotten used to this and now we're going to take it away and do something different, so. Uh, thank you very much for your presentation again, but those are my concerns with families and young children and having to now get into a private vehicle at night, you know. So those are my concerns with removing those, those stops, but thank you.
Thank you, noted. And we'll, we'll be glad, Mr. Mayor and members, to come back and, uh, periodically to give you just an update on how the pilot is going. Hopefully you hear from your constituents that it's great.
A couple of questions. All the Uber Lyft drivers that use it, because I, I heard you say they're not, they cannot go out of the area. They have to stay in the area, correct?
Yes, within the zone, yes.
Within the zone, so I can't pick one up at my house and have, and say, oh, don't drop me off at the bus stop, just take me downtown, I'll pay the extra. You can't do that, you're saying?
No, cannot do that.
So will then all the drivers, um, be registered with the county and, and, and be, has background checks on them?
All right, good question, and so, you know, it's a question that I asked as well in terms of, um, uh, the, the drivers. So the, the, the Federal Transit Administration will only allow, um, you know, transit agencies, and by the way, you know, this has been implemented in several different cities around the country, um, including one successful in Pinellas, uh, county in, in the western part of the state. Um, and so the federal government will allow, uh, you to do this, uh, sort of last, first, last mile using a ride hailing service only if you have an option where drivers can be, uh, drug tested. It doesn't require that the, uh, the Uber or Lyft driver, which are kind of gig, you know, the gig industry, to be tested. But we do have to have an option, and I failed to mention that in the presentation, of a taxi cab option. And those drivers are tested, uh, under the same rigor as a, you know, public employee, uh, vis a vis, you know, Palm Tran employees. And so that is a part of our plan and that's how we, you know, cover that aspect of, of the requirement.
So in her example of the student, would that student have the option of only ordering the taxi?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good.
Good, yeah, thank you for that.
Um, one more question, and this is more to try to understand the system. So it sounds to me that I could be picked up at any address in Royal Palm Beach with the Uber Lyft or taxi, taken to a bus stop within the shaded area. One of the shaded areas is our bus stops along Okeechobee Boulevard, which does have a express route right down to downtown. So I would get off at one of those bus stops, let's say Sandsbury Road, because I think that's, it's direct from Sandsbury Road right into downtown. Um, and then I, I, on the way back, I can take that back, get dropped off there, get picked up by a taxi and get taken back, or Uber Lyft and get taken back to my home.
Perfect, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it, it really, it, it adds a lot of additional mobility value to this community. Um, and you will actually emerge, I think, with one of the best, uh, mobility options in the county, yeah, uh, along with the other areas that we'll be testing. We also have identified 10 other areas, uh, that we'll, we'll be looking at throughout the county to, you know, apply this, this program. We, we will hopefully, you know, we, we'll establish metrics where we'll be measuring, you know, costs. We'll be measuring, you know, transfers, are people really traveling within the zone only? Or are they really, uh, transferring to the, the fixed route for longer trips? And so we'll, we'll be, you know, collecting all of that data, uh, and monitoring that as we, um, go through this phase of pilot.
Any other questions? No? You got one more question?
Well, I, I just think, because it, it, the term pilot's being used, so it's kind of like, oh, let's test it out and see. But what happens when it doesn't really?
That's not, that's part of the conversation that, where it's going to happen when they have, you know, with the staff. To understand that, okay?
I'll ask.
Okay, uh, well, other than that, no, no further questions? Thank you so much and, um, I, I'm excited about this and, uh, we want to make sure we, we get the story straight for our citizens. And, um, I believe in the long term, uh, things will be improved in terms of, uh, public transportation options. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilman, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Jan, I didn't get, ask you if you wanted, if you had any questions.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes, we can.
That's okay, no questions right now, thank you.
Okay, all right, because they're escaping now, okay. Anyway, moving right along. Um, we're going to go to our reports, uh, and, uh, this, you know, as I said, this is what I would have been discussing in terms of TPA meeting this morning and with that, um, we'll start with you, Jan. We'll start with you, you have a report?
No report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, good, Jan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, so we had our October Education Advisory Board meeting, which focused on Royal Palm Beach Elementary School. And Principal Tracy Geddy opened by reminding us that Royal Palm Beach continues to be known as the happiest place on earth. Uh, also that they have been an A-rated school since they opened in 2002 and they continue to do well in that regard. Um, not only have they been an A-rated school insofar as their structured rating system within the state is concerned, but they have been recently ranked among the top 8% of Florida elementary schools by, uh, US News and World Report. Uh, they are going to be doing a ribbon cutting, I think we all got notification of that, on a Ben Carson Reading Room on November the 2nd, uh, that was made possible with a $20,000 grant that they, uh, earned. Uh, and, uh, they've got a number of innovative, uh, very focused efforts underway to, uh, meet some, uh, really high-level goals of proficiency this coming year and I'm sure they'll, they'll succeed. Um, in response to our new Education Advisory Board Chair, Paula Wilson's initiative, uh, for the school year, the Department of Early Childhood Education came in and provided an overview of the district's VPK program, uh, as well as something they call its Transition to Kindergarten Program. The whole idea is the sooner you start teaching kids in a structured way, the more likely it is they're going to be successful throughout their education experience, K through 12 and beyond. Uh, it was a good presentation, very informative. Uh, we all know, of course, reading is really one of the critical, uh, educational, uh, activities that are undertaken early on. Uh, so once again this year, for I think 10th year now in a row, um, the council and village staff members will be reading for the record. Uh, we'll all be reading, um, in competition with other municipalities, but this reading, of course, takes place throughout the country. Uh, and same book, same day, uh, to as many kids as we possibly can read to. This year's book is called With a Lot of Love and there's no doubt in my mind, we're going to be reading With a Lot of Love, so.
What date is that?
It is the October the 26th, uh, actually, so, and we are in a friendly competition with other municipalities in Palm Beach County, for which we received honorable mention for the last four years. We'll see if we can, uh, top that. Um, speaking of transportation, uh, and, um, there's been a lot of, uh, opportunities to, to do that. Tonight was one of them. Uh, but, um, we, we also had an opportunity to, um, where am I going with this? Uh, I want to talk about two things. One, uh, is that, um, we, uh, Florida League of Cities Transportation, um, Legislative Policy Committee met October the 6th, as a matter of fact, and one of the things we talked about was, um, transportation from Florida point of view, from the executive branch point of view in Tallahassee. Uh, we had Jared Perdue, uh, actually as our guest speaker, he spent a good hour and a half with us, uh, talking about, again, his view of transportation challenges and opportunities. Uh, interestingly enough, uh, Mr. Perdue agreed that what we're talking about here is basically a paradigm shift to be able to fold in, uh, new attractive alternatives, uh, to, um, just adding to road capacity, adding lanes. Uh, and he agreed that that was going to be a challenging thing. Actually, I think he was the one that pointed out, um, the statement that Albert Einstein is known for. We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them. And so the idea of thinking through in a different way was one that he presented. Uh, and, um, and, and I, I think we all agree that we really are going to have to look at, uh, the future of, uh, our transportation needs, traffic congestion in a very different way if we hope to, to solve them reasonably. Uh, this past Tuesday, had a chance to actually hear from the, uh, US Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Pete Buttigieg at Forum Club. Interestingly enough, some of the things he said were exactly, or very similar to what, um, the, uh, Secretary of Transportation for Florida said. So there's a lot of alignment with the thinking about multimodal and the right mix to be able to accommodate this growth that we're experiencing here. Uh, again, thinking about it differently. In fact, what he said was, uh, speaking on behalf of, uh, transit, is good trains and transit benefit you even if you don't use them. Because it means there, there's fewer cars on the road to compete with and less congestion. I think we can all agree with that. Uh, there's a lot of work to be done, though, it's a very different approach. And the private sector is very key to this whole thing. Uh, everything from a bright line engagement, which we know has been going on, and all the way to something as straightforward as employers subsidizing mass transit for their employees. So a lot of work to be done, but, uh, there are a lot of good possibilities here. And, um, so it was interesting hearing him speak. Um, at another meeting I was at, somebody was talking about the BDB taking the initiative with, uh, West Palm Beach and advertising in New York City, that we are, um, the new Wall Street South. And so if, if the current situation, and I've been driving downtown in the mornings too and, and the traffic is tough, um, doesn't inspire the, the willingness to, or the desire to think differently about how we handle transportation and, and traffic, uh, than thinking about Wall Street South coming to us and it is becoming a reality. And that's going to bring, uh, additional growth over and above what perhaps other areas. So, uh, timing's right, a lot of good ideas, uh, just a matter of, like I say, shifting our view, uh, about how to solve these problems. And the last thing I want to mention is, um, uh, this will be the third time I've had the honor to sit on, uh, the, uh, the, um, US Navy Academy Candidate Selection Board. Um, uh, this is one that's, uh, set up by Senator Rubio, this one in particular for South Florida. He's got three of them, one in South Florida, one in the middle, central part of Florida and one in North Florida. Um, this year we have 20 applicants to interview. Uh, every time that I've gone through this before, and by the way, they refer to me as their token army guy. Um, but every time I've gone through this before, um, I, I walk away inspired, feeling really, really good about the future. Because these young leaders have tremendous potential and, uh, and they are, they are just amazing. So I am looking forward to, it's going to be a long day with, uh, 20 interviews, but, um, I'm excited about doing that. So that completes my report.
Okay, sounds interesting.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we had our Rock and Fall Festival last weekend, which was pretty impressive because Friday we had estimated 10,000 people and on Saturday we had between 18 and 20,000. So congratulations to Park and Rec and the staff for, um, for doing that. And what was really neat is Joe Noto, um, performed on Saturday night and he's a Nashville star, but he's also a local guy. So it was great to have him back. Our haunted house is open Fridays and Saturdays from 7 to 11 through October and that's over at Commons Park. We have a foreigner tribute band playing tomorrow night at Commons Park and then on November 3rd is Pat Benatar. And don't forget the, um, Green Market on Saturdays from 9 to 1 outside here in Village Hall. Our youth athletics are up and running and we have 200 participants already registered and they're actually registering now as well for youth basketball and they're looking for volunteers. Uh, we have our free senior congregant meals Monday through Friday over at the rec center at 12 o'clock. And our Young at Heart membership has sold out, so what's really neat is we have 275 people registered for it that show up every month for those meetings, so congratulations to the club. And, um, we have our Royal Palm Beach Community Band playing Tuesday, the 24th at 7:00 PM over the Cultural Center. That is a free concert, it's open to everybody. Um, we do have our new Community Connection, so the, uh, fall issue is out, so make sure you stop by any of our, um, government buildings to pick those up and all of our events are on royalpalmbeachfl.gov.
Good, a lot going on.
Yeah.
Okay, Ray, you have anything?
Yes, I have one thing. Uh, a letter was received earlier or late la, last week sometime, uh, concerning a request from H.L. Johnson to use our stage at Commons Park. Uh, we don't rent our stage out, uh, so the only way that we, we could entertain this request is to do it as a co-sponsored event and I would need that direction from council. I did talk to the principal and I said that, um, they want to do it on a Tuesday and a Thursday night, I think December 5th and December 7th. That doesn't interfere with anything that we're doing. Uh, but we, the request also included audio and, 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 um, lighting. We do not provide audio, audio and lighting. We do, every time we use it, we hire a company, the company comes out and sets it up, usually with a band. And, um, and that's what we use. It costs, uh, at least a thousand dollars, uh, for each setup. Um, so they would have to be responsible for that if they wanted, uh, if they wanted lighting and if they wanted sound. I don't, I know they're doing a concert, I don't know, uh, the extent of, of their needs. I know that the principal has talked and talked to our, our superintendent out there and, um, but that would, that's the only thing I know of that was in the request, but it's not something we can or do provide.
Okay, so what do you need from us tonight, a vote or a consensus?
A consensus. Um, they did apply for a special event permit, she did get that in right after I talked to her. It is, it is complete, the staff will review that and then it will be on a, the November council agenda. But in order for me to even process it, I would have need, a consensus, that, that you're okay co-sponsoring it. And the final approval will be when you approve the special event permit.
I think that, um, the fact that they're looking to pick days that are really available, uh, makes, makes a lot of sense. And as long as they understand the issue about the, if they need to have the professional come in for the sound, that that would be something they would have to do, I would ask that we should be, give a consensus.
Well, I just want to have a conversation about it, if you don't mind, before, because we don't rent the stage.
We do not rent any of our stages, any of our, any of our outdoor stages.
And, correct, so what I would like to do is, because I, if we do it like this and just do this one, it's a floodgate of requests coming through and how do we deny some and allow others? So what I was actually thinking is, is if we, um, do an allowance similar to what we do at the Cultural Center where our Royal Palm Beach schools have a one-time-a-year access to the stage, make it very specific to our Royal Palm Beach schools, they would have to put in their application between 60 and 45 days prior to to put in their application between 60 and 45 days prior to their event. So this way, it's not all the schools using it, it's not front-loading, so I know I want it in all these days, and it interferes with village events. But I would like to make it very specific to our...
Yeah, we could make, we could make it specific. I think we already have rules in place, though, that certain days, no, right, certain days already, it would be, if it's not available, we, you know, we have it locked out for certain days.
You know, a local agreement that we have with the school board, we do have a shared facility agreement, and it is for Monday through Thursday. It does not include the weekends.
That's correct, right.
So that would be the basis, then?
This would be within the context of that.
And that, that's the agreement that they use for, for the Cultural Center, and actually even, even other, other facilities that we have.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is there any reason why they wouldn't want to use the Cultural Center? This isn't an outdoor event for them?
I don't know, I didn't ask that question, and they don't seem to be here, so.
I can unofficially answer that, just from going through the process for the last five years, it's their winter concerts, what they do is they break it up, they've extended, they've outgrown their...
Their own facility.
Their own facility, they've been doing it outside in their basketball court for the last couple of years.
Okay. They have been doing it outside.
Correct.
But I don't know why they wouldn't want to do it at the Cultural Center if it was available during the week. I can always ask them.
We could ask if it's available.
It wouldn't require a special event to do that, because it would be indoor, isn't it? I can always ask, I can ask. I'll get you that answer.
No, I'm just saying is because we don't rent any of our outdoor stages. Well, we don't cosponsor, we don't let outside groups use our outdoor stages, so I just want to make sure that if we keep it in the context of this...
I'm with you on that, we're not opening up the door for anything.
But we...
Well, yeah, the fact that they, in the letter, they indicated they understood that what the date, what days of the week would be potentially an option, and they adhere to that. So that's, that was part of their understanding of the process.
I'm fine if we word it that way, so that it is very specific to the schools. The reasoning for the 60 to 45 days is you need to put it in a minimum of 45 days before the event. I didn't want it more than 60 days, because I don't want somebody to quote forward.
Can we put that in?
You can get a one-time, or we'll cosponsor one-time-a-year for the schools.
No, I agree, to make it clear that this is not an open-door thing. No, no, absolutely. She came in right away and got that down, yeah.
Right, but the reason why I went to the 60 days is so somebody can't say like, oh, okay, yes, we want these five days, and wait a minute, they're going to conflict with something the village is doing for the public in the future. So this way, we would have already had our schedule set, and it won't interfere with that. So that's why that specific timeframe.
But if we did, if there was a case where we had something already set we were going to do, that would be a denial of that request, very simple, so, anyway. Okay, Keith, you're, you're okay with this language thing that we're talking about?
Yes, that's fine.
You gotta get back, you gotta get back in shape.
I don't have anything else, Mayor, thank you very much.
So, let the record show that the consensus was provided, with the guidance and specifics that we want, and the language that we're going to put on the agenda here, okay? Anything else? Greg, you're done?
I'm done, thank you, Mayor.
Just to let the council know, there is an affordable housing symposium being held at the TPA offices on October 27th, from 8:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. I'll be one of the speakers on the panel discussion on the legal framework for the Live Local Act, so.
Oh, that should be interesting.
Interesting day, just wanted to let you know about that, and...
You just reminded me of something. Tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, TPA has having their, their meeting for the projects?
TPA?
I think it's tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think you're right.
Oh, I had the paper, what did I do with it?
They're going to, I think what I saw was they're going to be scheduling meetings throughout the county. They don't have a date for the meeting they want to do out here yet.
Look, they're having something tomorrow, it's a workshop, where folks should be coming to. It's a workshop, it's a workshop. You might want to have somebody sit on that, I don't know, but, okay.
That's it.
All right, so that covers our reports this evening. Now, we will go to statements from the public on non-agenda items, or items on a consent agenda. Diane, were there any advance public requests, Mayor? No, I got the card, I didn't get to the card, I got a card. Okay, Ray, you have anyone with their hands raised? I do have a comment card, I think from Mr. Steve Pans, Pants? Okay, please come up.
Hi, everyone, my name is Steve Pants. I've lived in the village for 17 years, and I'm embarrassed to admit this is the first time I've been to a council meeting, so, thanks for your time, and I know you have better things to do than this, but...
No, we want to hear what you have to say.
I've, I've applied for a parking space in the RV and boat storage facility, and my boat trailer doesn't look like a normal boat trailer. It has four kayaks inside. It's, they're large and heavy pedal kayaks, one for myself, my wife, and my two daughters. And there were no open trailers that would accommodate the size and the weight of four kayaks. And so, I built this trailer from a cargo trailer, installed structure and bunks and winch, to make it useful. And so they have to be protected from the sun and the weather and theft. Here's a few pictures, just to give you a visual. So, I know the village staff is trying to do the right thing, they rejected the application, I think because they're seeing it as a storage trailer.
That's what it looks like.
And, and not a, but, but not a boat trailer, right? And, you know, and rejecting it based on the appearances rather than the function of a boat trailer. So I understand the criticality in keeping the lot for non-commercial use, and from the outside, it looks a lot like a trailer that a commercial landscaping company might use. But its function is perfectly aligned with the spirit and intent of the facility, and by all reasonable definitions, it is a boat trailer. And so I don't think, if there's a concern about setting a precedent on storage trailers in the lot, I don't think you have that concern. So, you know, I think there's some solutions. I've sent the photos, I could sign an affidavit that it's for non-commercial use, could do an annual inspection, or resubmit all the photos to show that it's still being used for that purpose.
When you say annual, an annual inspection, or some number of intervals or inspections, you let us go in there and look inside and see, are you not storing a bunch of other stuff in there, and it's just the kayaks?
Yeah, the kayaks and the related gear for kayaking, so.
Have we had a chance to see what's inside this trailer at this point?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Yeah, and then I, I think you have a pretty strong mechanism in the lease agreement already to limit the access to 20 times per month, and that should really guarantee no, no commercial use.
That's, is it 20 times a month?
I thought it was less than that.
I thought it was less than that, too.
But I have not read the agreement recently.
Okay, we need to look at that. Keith, legal definition. Are these considered boats? They're watercraft, right?
Is a boat, I think the, the issue becomes, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, how we're and getting this, you know, regular inspections and...
Well, the applicant is willing to have that done, it was something that I was thinking that...
We, we've denied it, because...
There've been other denials in the past for similar trailers, that you can't tell that it's a, what's in it.
I know, you have to open it up and look at it.
We have 300 and some spots out there. We got the land free from the Catholic Church with a very, very strict requirement that it not be, compete with commercial operations. We even had to do some convincing to get them to agree that boats and RVs that everybody could see are boats and RVs is not a commercial use. They didn't really agree 100% in the beginning, but I think they finally, finally agreed, and, and, and we just didn't want to have any storage trailers in there to risk the people that gave us that land saying, well, wait a minute, you got a bunch of storage trailers, and then, and then us having a legal issue with, with the land.
We would still have potential legal jeopardy.
I mean, the negotiations to get boats and RVs were, I mean, it didn't come...
I know, I remember.
And it came actually with, with significant objection in the beginning, and, and it, you know, was for our lawyers, meeting with their lawyers and saying, no, we will absolutely limit this to RVs, and, and we, and our agreement with FPL limits it to RVs and boats, and, and FPL was very, we ended up needing to buy an insurance policy specifically for FPL with this restriction. So, it's, while I know he's saying, oh, it's a boat trailer, because it's got boats in it, but it is, it is a storage trailer, it is a cargo trailer, and that's what the other people will, may, may determine that it is, and then make us jump through hoops. It's just not real good enforcement art. We enforce the rules by our cameras that we have out there. We don't have staff to go down there and check in trailers. If I had 300 trailers that I had to check in, I don't know how often I would need to check in to make sure they, they had what they were supposed to have in them, I mean, it's just, it just wouldn't be workable. For one, that gave us the key to his trailer and let us look in at any time we want, I mean, obviously, but that's not what we're dealing, we're dealing with, I think, 350 spots.
So I, I understand this is the first instance of this request that you've had for boats...
It's not the first.
For boats in a trailer like this?
Well, storage trailers, we've had plenty of storage trailers with...
Right, this is the first instance of boats in a trailer like this. And so, you know, if, I guess the enforcement side of it, I see it as, you know, you can allow it on, on the basis of the inspection, the initial, and then, you know, if you're not letting other storage trailers in there with, with other stuff, right, general storage, you, you really don't have any enforcement there, you, you make that barrier at the, at the entry, and, and then you, you don't have the other storage trailers in there, right? So I guess it's, it's a matter of whether you, your lease agreement and your calling, you're looking at function or appearance, right? There is no consistent definition of a boat trailer.
No, it's, well, that's not really true, right? There is a definition for boat trailer.
I'm sure there is, you know...
I did send you one from the town of Palm Beach, and...
Palm Beach.
I would need to look at both the FPL documents and the church documents, the deed restrictions, see exactly what they say. You've been presented with the enforcement challenges from, from the village manager, then I, I would have to report back on the legal issues.
And I don't know if I need Lou for this or not, but I understand the protection factor of having them in the trailer, because we have kayak rentals that are, there's obviously a structure out there that can house them safely in the public. I'm not saying keep your equipment in there, but is there an option of you just need somewhere to store them? If there was something like that where you could put them, but they're exposed to the elements, is that an option where then you can drive in with your trailer, load them up, go, your activities, come back, because you just need somewhere to store them?
No, I, I need a place to put the trailer also. My HOA won't allow my trailer at my home.
The trailer is still there.
Well, that, yeah, that's something different. I mean, I know there are other businesses in the village that accommodate that, because we've had other residents that have the similar issues with that, and it's storing a trailer somewhere, but at least this way...
I'm, I'm at a public facility right now, and paying four times what the, the rate is at, at your facility, and it's not as nice, so.
Four times the rate you said?
That's what I'm wondering, is at least if it's storage, it's somewhere out there for that.
Okay, I'll, I'll...
I mean, I've, I've spoken, and I really appreciate Mr. Pants, but I, I couldn't wrap my head around, I mean, the fact is, you know, where do you draw the line? And I understand the whole, well, it's boat trailer, but you can get in anything with the boat trails. For example, a lot of people in the equestrian community, can they park their horse trailers over there now and say, oh, I put a boat in it, so now I have storage of horse trailers on that property, which are clearly commercial, but there's a boat in it, so it's a boat trailer. And that's where the problem comes in, is if it's not transparent, and you said you needed it, if, if we can't see it, I mean, a boat trailer can be defined by function and form. And, you know, the boat trails I'm familiar with are the ones, you know, you see people driving down the street with. But if it's, as you were saying, you know, the function of it, well, there, there's not a trailer that you can't make any cargo trailer into a boat trailer, right? Logically?
I, I think you have to, to look at it and make a judgment on it, is, is there just a little boat thrown in there, but it's really for something else?
Why would that be different?
Is it purpose-built? Well, I don't know.
It's, if there's a boat inside of a trailer, that's a boat trailer, right? That's, that's the argument, right?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, an analogy here, though, is, and I brought this up to a couple of you, there are RVs that people have made out of these storage trailers. You can do a quick Google search and find those. And they don't look like normal RVs from the outside, but inside, there's, there's a kitchen and a little bathroom and a bunk, right? So, you know, the analogy there is, is do you reject that because it looks like a storage trailer when it is serving the function as an RV?
The title wouldn't have RV on it. You know, given those very strict restrictions that were put on our, our lease agreement with the church, it may very well be that that lease agreement prohibits enclosed trailers, and if that's the case, then, then we're, then...
I think we might want to, yeah, look into that aspect of it.
But here's where I think we are, to be honest with you. At the end of the day, you may be storing what is considered a boat in there, but it's not a boat trailer, it's a storage trailer. It's not, it doesn't really meet that, and that's really what we're, we're going around in circles on this, but...
Yeah, then I, I think it'd be good to clarify that definition and...
Exactly, and that, and that makes sense, and it's a policy decision for us to make, I think, if we want to look at it, to decide whether or not, if it's, if it's legal or permissible under the, the lease agreement, then I think this is a good thing, I think, because you do raise good, valid points that, you know, we should look at and consider, is my thought.
Is the main concern the visual to know what the contents are, or is it the fact that it is...
It's not a boat trailer.
I understand it's not a boat trailer, but he's retrofitted it to be a boat trailer.
No, he's using it as a boat trailer.
Okay.
He's storing stuff in there that happened to be boats, but it's not a boat trailer.
So is the lack of transparency because of the vehicle a concern?
This is where we're going to ask Keith to go, to look into...
The concerns are multiple. We don't want to put ourselves in a position where we have breached our lease agreement, and, you know, that's the legal side of it, but as the manager explained, the enforcement implications could become...
Problematic.
Overburdenous.
That's why I'm wondering, is because you've worked this, you've done this to your trailer, correct? You didn't buy it that way, you then retrofitted it.
I had it custom-built with the door location and the length and size exactly for him, and then I retrofitted it.
So, as an example, that's why I'm asking about the transparency side of it, if there were a panel or a portion of a panel that was plexiglass, then you could see it, now we know exactly what's in it all the time, we don't have to worry about the enforcement of it. I do understand the expense of that, but if that's the main concern is that we have, you're now, can now make it visible.
And that was something Rich suggested, and, and I'd be willing to look into that, I don't know what that would cost, I'd, I'd be willing to look into it, and...
I would just, I would suggest not doing anything until we get past the terminology.
I'd like to find a solution, so if, if that's something that's workable, you know, let me know, and I can look into the cost.
Let's get that information back, and then we'll get back to you, and if it makes sense for you to look into that or not, okay?
And as I said when we talked, if it was, if there was a transparent panel, to me that would, for me personally, that would take the enforcement part off the, off the table, but...
Let's wait, let's wait and hear back from Keith.
Okay, well, and so I'd like to, when you do get back to me, if that's an option, let me know, you know...
No, we will, no.
...specifications, or...
We'll get back to you.
You know, how, how big it would need to be, and...
If, if in fact that, if it's a viable option, yeah, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you again.
I have no other comment cards on non-agenda items or consent agenda items, and...
Kind of forgot about Jan through the discussion. Okay, okay. Without seeing her, it's kind of...
I knew she wasn't waiting.
So...
Which one? All right. I don't know. That's okay. I don't have any additional comment cards on non-agenda items or... items or consent agenda items, but anyone would like to speak on a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item, I'll give that opportunity.
Good evening. My name is James Day. And my name is James Day.
Okay.
And I would like to thank you all for your kind support of my wife, Victoria Day.
Okay.
I can't thank you enough for what you did.
Well, she was, uh, she was greatly admired by all who knew her and that she worked with.
Yes.
I had an opportunity to get to know her a little bit myself personally, and she was a wonderful person, yes.
And she loved you all. She thought you were wonderful people.
Well.
You guys have just poured your heart out to her.
Okay, and we understand.
Thank you.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. God bless you.
God bless you.
Your family.
Okay. Okay. Then all other comments, non-agenda items, consent agenda items, I'm closing the floor to, to that. And Diane, give us the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the first public budget hearing of September 14th, 2023, and the final public budget hearing of September 21st, 2023. Two, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 302 in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Set amendment to transfer total of $100,000 from new Village Hall Furniture Project EN 2304 and Fund 303 to Village Hall Construction Project EN 2104 and Fund 302. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a contract with Clean Space Incorporated for custodial services for the new Village Hall in an amount not to exceed $5,238.21 per month and $57,620.31 per year for the initial term and to eliminate an open custodian position in the Public Works Department. Four, approval and authorization for the purchase and installation of artificial turf from Play Space Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $150,000 by piggybacking Clay County Contract Request for Proposal Number 1819-2, effective through May 27th, 2024. The turf will be installed in the Commons Park West Playground. Five, approval of a special event permit for Amber's Animal Outreach to hold a Christmas fundraiser at the Community Animal Hospital of Royal Palm Beach on Saturday, December 16th, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Six, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend landscape architect services provided by Cutler and Herring for two years. Seven, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend surveying services provided by Langin Engineering and Environmental Services Incorporated for two years. Eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend electrical services provided by Smith Engineering Consultants Incorporated for two years. Nine, approval of the bid award in the amount of $700,942 and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for Village Meeting Hall Renovations EN 2202 to all site construction. Ten, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend stormwater engineering services provided by CDM Smith Incorporated for two years. And eleven, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend geotechnical and environmental engineering services provided by TerraCon Consultants Incorporated for two years.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions for members of council?
Call number nine.
Number nine?
Mm-hmm.
Any other? All right, then I look for a motion to approve because agenda absent, um, item nine. That, you got it.
That's Chris.
I don't want to know anything. I'll see when I.
Turn the football game off, Chris.
It's not on you. I know, it's too early. We're getting out of control here. Okay. Um. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that consent agenda was approved five zero, with the exception of item nine, which is now Jeff with Holson.
So I'd like to turn to the village manager and ask him to just kind of review for us what the renovated Village Meeting Hall, this building will look like once it's completed. So what we'll be doing is, Diaz will all come out, the floor, the raised floor will come out, where we have these windows, windows all the way to the floor will be put in, windows will be, or floor, ceiling, floor windows will be put in back there with doors to the out, to the patio. The flooring will all be replaced. There'll be the ceilings, there will be some reworking of the ceilings and the shape of them. The control room will be turned into a storage room for tables and chairs and things like that, and it will be a, a mop room. Um, we are going to keep the petition and we will get rid of the, the conference table and, and, and have other tables for, for leased space. Our plan is to have this basically a party room. I, I keep saying 75, it can actually, has, it has a higher capacity than that, but I think as a, as a party venue, based on everything else that we have, this would be a great venue for, for 75 people.
Would, just a question, uh, would that room, if they're having a party be like used for catering?
Yes, that's, it could absolutely be used for that, to set up the food, because we are gonna put, we're gonna put an ice maker.
Yeah.
Over there, um, so that we'll have access to ice. And that would be, yeah, that's kind of the plan, that that would be the area that you would be serving food out of. And then this, rest of this area will all be just open. And then open to the whole patio outside. And the docks. So, I mean, I think it'll be a good wedding venue even, um, reception venue for s- small events.
So the only thing they'll have to deal with is the ghost of many past council meetings.
And, and tell them about that. Well, and, and the other reason for doing this and not obviously getting rid of the building, that, that wouldn't make sense. But.
Oh, no.
What we did though, when we did the new Village Hall, um, you always have to build in growth, space for growth, but you don't know what your growth is and you don't know what we're going to be doing 20 years from now or 30 years from now. So what we did was, the council chambers over there, we made it tall enough so that two floors could be put in there with additional administrative offices. I think it adds about 3,000 square feet. We have about, I think, eight thou, seven to eight thousand square feet of office space now, so it adds significant more office space, um, on the two floors. So that if something changed in the future, we took back administration of police and fire, um, we have that flexibility to, to expand in Village Hall and then move back into here with the council chambers. Of course, this is gonna add to kind of the portfolio of places that you can rent. Oh, yeah. And this will be one of the spectacular views like. Correct, correct. And it'll be leased by the same group over at the cultural center that leases our other spaces, so. That sounds good. Okay. And, I mean, I know that this is not part of this, it's part of the Village Hall, but, you know, the area between here and Village Hall will be a really nice plaza area, the fountain and everything and, and, and it will be a very, it'll be a festive area. It'll be an area that, that, I know we have the, the, the green market. It'll make, it'll really add to the green market and any other events that we think of doing here. Sounds, sounds great. So, um, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, uh, not regular agenda item, but consent agenda item number nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show consent agenda item number nine was approved five zero. We'll move to our regular agenda, uh, reg, regular agenda item all one. There's a public hearing to consider application number 23-044, an application by HM2V Inc., and approval of a second reading of ordinance number 1039. The applicant is seeking a rezoning approval to rezone approximately point three five acres, point two three five acres parcel of land from the village's open space zoning district to the industrial general zoning district for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so someone will have to be sworn in.
Thank you, and Mayor, uh, if I can, there's a little more to the ordinance title, if I can read that and then do the preliminary quasi judicial matters. This is ordinance 1039. Ordinance of the village council of Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, providing for the rezoning of certain real property within the corporate limits of the village. Property consists of one parcel of land comprising a total of 0.235 plus or minus acres, more or less located at 6846 Seminole Palm Drive, informally known as Paint Lux Auto Body, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more specifically described herein, shall be assigned. The village zoning designation of IG Industrial General, providing that the zoning map of the village of Royal Palm Beach will be amended to reflect proper designation for this parcel of real property. Running conflicts clause, severability clause, effective date and for other purposes, uh, I need to swear in, anyone who's going to be speaking to the council on this item, each of you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that your testimony to the village council be the truth, tell truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Coming back to council, any ex parte discussion, site visits, consultations with experts or anything of the like regarding this item should be disclosed for the record at this time.
Village staff.
No.
Then with that, with that, Mayor, we can proceed with the item. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Um, just to eliminate the redundancy, um, I'm not going to repeat anything that we've, as has already been said, the property is currently vacant. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop the property for the purposes of enlarging an existing paint lux parking lot. Just in justification statements, uh, further states that no storage of any material or equipment, disabled vehicles of any kind will occur. The Plains Zoning Commission, um, uh, considered this application on September 18th, 2023 and recommended a vote of five to zero. Village Council considered this application at their September 21st, 2023 regular meeting and voted to approve this application on first reading by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application on second reading. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, does the applicant choose to make any comments?
Good evening.
Good evening. Green, um, on the.
The bottom.
It is?
Oh, okay.
It's on, it's on. My name is Vincent Kaper. I'm the agent of the application, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Are you satisfied with the presentation that was made regarding?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All right, now, any comments, prior comments from the public, Diane? Ray, anyone got their hands raised on agenda item all one?
No, Mayor.
All right, I have not received any comment cards from the public. If anyone here would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comments to agenda item all one and take comments from the members on council. If there are no comments or questions, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item all one was approved five zero. And now, let the drums begin. We will hear officially for the last time at our village council meetings from the ubiquitous and famous.
Infamous.
I said famous, they said infamous. Mr., yeah, the, the man who's been in charge of the, uh, Royal Palm Beach.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Recio, Mr. Lou Recio Lou, Lou.
No, this is it. This is it. October 25th is his last day.
I thought I was here for an item that you wanted to talk about.
I got the direction on the school board one. It never ends.
He tricked me. He tricked me.
Well, what do you have to say for yourself? I mean, after 30 years, really?
Thirty years.
I'm speechless.
You were never speechless, no.
It's, it's been, it's been a pleasure, uh, working for the village.
That was, that was classic.
It's not working.
Actually, instead of saying three minutes, it should say 30 minutes.
No, it's, it's, it's been a pleasure working in the village. Um, you know, living and working in, in the same community, uh, is, is unbelievable. Um, I've seen a lot of growth. Mayor, council and the mayor and other councils before you, um, we've had unbelievable support. The manager, uh, Ray, it's been a pleasure working for Ray and working with all the department heads. I mean, this is, the, the working environment here in Royal Palm is, is just unbelievable. When, when I hear other communities, uh, you know, when you go to these, these conferences, especially for Parks and Rec, you know, Parks and Rec is down in the bottom. It's not a necessity unless you speak to your residents, um, and how they have to fight for every little, uh, penny that they're, they ask for. Um, and yet, you know, I don't think I've, I've had the fight. I think I've been able to, uh, you know, show you where, what we needed and everything. You saw the need and, uh, you, you gave me unlimited support. And my staff, second to none. You know, we always have issues, you know, there's, you're different, you, you're working with, you know, 70 different personalities, but, uh, the fact of the matter is they get the job done and, and they take pride in what they're doing. So I just want to say thank you. I, it's, it's been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Well, any, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank my, my first formal involvement with the Village of Royal Palm Beach was, I think it was 2002, when I became a member of the Recreation Advisory Board, and that's what introduced me to Lou and honestly how we had so much going on in the community, for all of the community. Now, this is before I even had children. And it was like, wow, we offer so many programs and so many things, um, for kids and for our entire population. And, you know, being out at events, seeing how hard Lou and his staff works and, you know, how big, like Selena said, we had, you know, over 10,000 people at the Oktoberfest last weekend. And, you know, from my observations, you know, we've never had issues at any of our events, um, other than getting in and out, or getting out, uh, at certain, certain ones. But, uh, you know, that, it's been a pretty good record. I really enjoyed our time on the Recreation Advisory Board and it led me to a path that got me up here and, and I appreciate, because sitting up here, um, it's important that the department heads and the employees un, feel this is a good place to work, because I think we are invested and work towards being a good place for people to work. So, but thank you for so many years of service and, uh, I hope you enjoy your retirement, but don't be a stranger.
Thank you, and I won't be a stranger.
Actually, and I, similar to councilman Valentes have had the opportunity to work closely with Lou. And, um, to put it in perspective, we're 12 square miles and we, and you've overseen our 24 parks and helped us with an additional two. So it's amazing to think that we have 26 different operating areas, not to mention all the events, um, as the population changes and our residents do and their needs change, just to make sure that our programs stay relevant with it. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
You know, when I first got on the council, one of the things that somebody pointed out to me was, um, that Family Circle magazine back in 2008 had ranked Royal Palm Beach as a place to raise families. That's a tribute to you, the work that you've done, the leadership you've provided, the outstanding commitment from the staff, who are absolutely amazing. Um, and so you can feel confident that you've left a really, really great legacy here, and we thank you for that.
Thank, thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Diane's trying to say something.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, yeah.
I am sorry I'm not there, Lou, for your last meeting. You have never stopped to grow Royal Palms Park and Recreation Department, always innovating, always bringing new things over these past 30 years. And I would like to see you, why don't you take a couple vacations, maybe apply for that Recreation Advisory Board.
You've been listening.
You've been listening to the manager.
So thank you for, thank you for all your service, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jan.
I said my words to Lou this, this last week and this past week. We've had the, we've had the pleasure of sitting on interviews this week, what we have at least, well, seven, nineteen, I guess.
Yeah.
It, it, even up to the last minute, and, and assisting in his replacement has been a pleasure. I remember when I came here, twenty-four years ago. I came here right after Lou's. A birthday party.
We could do the math.
You remember that one?
Well, I heard stories about that party for a long time. We've never had a party to.
That was back in the day where we used to have real, we used to have real parties.
I think we stopped that.
We did, no, we could stop.
No, we, I could tell you some stories. But maybe, maybe now you're retired, you can have another one of those parties.
Yeah, I remember that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Been a pleasure. Are you jealous of this? Thanks, Keith.
Lou, um, yes, I'm just going to say the same things with these people. It's been a real pleasure working with you. You've done a fantastic job, and maybe one of your parting gifts will be, you know, one of those razors where you can buzz, you can buzz cut, you know? Gold plated or something, I don't know, thinking out of the box, but enjoy yourself on your retirement.
Thanks.
I am too jealous, and it's gotta be a great feeling.
Mixed feelings.
Lou, it's been a great pleasure the last thirty years working with you and all the parties and planning and events. So I hope you're not a stranger and I hope you still come around.
I won't be a stranger, and God, I hope they keep the women's bathrooms toilet paper filled.
Me too, Lou.
What a parting comment.
It has been a real pleasure, though, working with you. Good luck and enjoy your retirement.
Well, Lou, I guess you're gonna get on your horse when you go outside and you're, you're right off into the moonlight as opposed to sunset, but, but in all honesty, it's been really, really a pleasure to work and interact with you for the years I've been involved in working with the village. You have been special, and you're one of the pillars that has helped to make Royal Palm Beach what it is today. Uh, and I hope you, the spirit and, and, and philosophy and concept that you put in place for our parks, departments, operations continues to go forward and continues to grow. And we, you know, I'm serious when we're saying, don't be a stranger, all right? Come around, and I'm sure if you see some things, you might want to say, hey, you guys think about this? But no, it's really, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, Hamar used the, the right phraseology. You have less, left a tremendous impactful and lasting legacy on this village, and we are so proud of, of our parks. That's one of the reasons why people come here, I think, to, to live in this wonderful village. So we bid you farewell for now, but not goodbye.
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I, I can't say anything else.
Beautiful. That's a lot better than the toilet paper in the window.